Hello, all. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is February twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. This is our regularly scheduled City of Columwood Springs City Council meeting. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, let's go ahead and call Rome.
Mayor Woo So.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dayne, Counselor Gottes, Counselor Zelinski, Counselor Wymer, Counselor Schacter, Counselor Sims.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent, in a full house. Um, any agenda changes or conflicts? I'll see none. We close that. Um, any council announcements? Counselor Gottes.
Uh, there will be a noticed uh event at my house on Saturday. Council members, all council members are invited to attend. Uh, and it is noticed.
Yeah, it's a celebration.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, excellent. A celebration for birthdays and really great people we know. So, um, thank you for hosting. Um, moving on, citizens appearing before council, this is for items not on our agenda this evening. As I see no members of the public here this evening, I will say that I don't believe anyone will be taking this opportunity. I will also say we encourage you to come and join us for meetings. Come in person. We would love to hear items that are concerning you and hear your voice. It's a great opportunity. We always open this opportunity for three minutes per person to discuss things that are not on the agenda for the evening. So, um, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting. I'm going to bring it back for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Dem.
I'm Anna Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see none. The motion unanimously. Um, moving on, item number nine, South Bridge, what? Matt, would you do us a favor and will you just mute yourself when you're not making comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, Ryan Gordon, engineer with a South Bridge update.
Yeah, good evening, counsel. Ryan Gordon, the city engineer for the South Bridge update. Um, pretty, pretty quick update here. Um, again, we're, we're working on finalizing the design, optimizing a few things. Um, we did meet with Holy Cross this week with their board of directors to, to give them an update of where things are going as progressing towards, um, looking to issue right away in Eastman Dawkins to them. So that went really well. Um, I think the other thing to note, note to counsel is that there is going to be some turnover, some challenges at the FHWA. Um, several of the members are either taking the early retirement or were probationary members and have been let go due to some of the um, um, executive orders at the, the federal level. Um, we don't know what that's going to do, but it may impact schedule. Um, as they're the ones who are issuing the, the grants. So we're just working through all of those um, challenges and nuances that we see right now um through the grant process. So that's my update. We, we don't have a whole lot going on. Happy to field some questions and um take comments.
Excellent. Any questions? Okay, I see none from council. We'll open it up to questions from the community. Anybody online with questions this or comments this evening? Merrill, we see you and we love that you're here for the update. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Okay, this evening I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment um section and we'll bring it back just to a thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be back in a couple of weeks for another update.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Um, we're going to move on to item number ten. This is the Workforce Housing Fund Advisory Board. Wha Fab, which sounds awesome. Um, recommendation to fund the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition Good Deeds Program.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name, for the record, my name is Kevin Reyes. I am the housing development manager for the city. Um, so the item before you this evening is a recommendation from the Workforce Housing Fund Advisory Board to top off funds for the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition. If council recalls, the uh, the director of West Mountain Housing Coalition attended council uh in December and gave everybody an update on the progress of that program. So I won't go into all the details of that, but I will provide just a quick refresher on sort of how the program works. Uh, so just to, just to get everyone on the same page, the West Mountain was, was founded uh twenty twenty-three and it's funded by participating jurisdictions from Aspen all the way down to Glenwood. Uh, and the way it works is uh they provide a, a down payment uh on the purchase price of a house in exchange for a deed restriction. Uh, and so, for example, if a house is a, you know, in Glenwood Springs, if someone wants to buy a house, the, uh, they'll give thirty percent of that, so they'll give three hundred thousand dollars and then that individual will pay the mortgage on the seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then uh the, the house will be de-districted in perpetuity. So that's how the program works. Uh, again, April Long was here in December and updated council. And if you recall, uh, last year, the program purchased a total of eight houses or helped people purchase a total of eight houses uh between Aspen and here, but all of the houses happened to be in Garfield County. And four of the houses uh were in Glenwood Springs uh city limits. Um, and those houses that were purchased in, in Glenwood Springs happened to house folks who uh not only live here, but they also work in city limits. Um, and so if you were to do the math, uh, it's sort of a return on investment. Last year, council gave two hundred thousand dollars to the program and we got four houses out of it. So that was, that comes to fifty thousand dollars a house, uh, which is pretty good ROI if you look at it from that perspective. Uh, for this year, uh, there, West Mountain is approaching jurisdictions again to top off their funds. Snowmass Village has already provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the program. And a new house is already under contract. Uh, it's going to be closing next week. Uh, and that happens again to be in Glenwood Springs city limits. And that house, it's, it's kind of notable was previously used as a short-term rental and now it's going to be housing a full-time resident.
Yeah.
Uh, who is a, a single mother of two kids and she works for the school district. So, you know, that, I don't, I can't think of a better sort of story uh than, than that. So, um, that's sort of where we are with the program. Again, uh, we're, we're coming before council this evening to uh forward the, the recommendation from the WH Fab, which is to allocate one hundred thousand dollars of workforce housing fund uh money towards uh the, the program, uh, the Good Deeds Program in twenty twenty-five. And with that, uh, they're recommending a hundred thousand dollars for three years. So a hundred thousand dollars per year for three years. So a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six and in twenty twenty-seven. And the idea behind that is to provide some continuity and some, some uh, you know, just some, yeah, some consistency with how they can administer this program in the future. So that's the reason why they're providing this three-year recommendation. And then the last sort of nuance to the recommendation is to allow WH Fab to be open to hearing additional funding requests to top off the funds sort of as needed. Uh, this is different than the request that council had in September where there was a one-off sort of ad hoc request to help close uh, one, a specific transaction. This, this recommendation is different than that. This is to allow the West Mountain to come back, uh, you know, in six months or eight months and say, hey, we've spent all of our money. Can you help us re-up our fund? Uh, again, this just provides that opportunity for them to do that. Um, so I'll stop talking. I think that was enough information, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And April, perfect timing. Perfect timing. You're welcome to come up to the podium.
Okay.
Yeah.
I plan to say anything. Just here for questions.
Okay, awesome. Okay, great. Um, Counselor Schacter.
Thank you. Um, my question is actually for Carl. Um, I believe part of the rationale and the justification for two C funds has to do with the wording in the um bondage or the ballot and the ordinance about how those funds can be applied in partnership and for adjacent communities, if you will. Could you kind of, for the record, go over
Sure.
the rationale for us, how it applies in this.
I don't know that I can go over the rationale, but I can tell you what the code says and what the ballot question said. Um, the ballot question said to, uh, one of the bullet points in the ballot question is to provide resources for the city to form partnerships with private and nonprofit sectors and other public entities to develop workforce housing. And that, that particular provision of the ballot question was not geographically limited. Um, and then um in the, the council further refined that in the enabling legislation implementing that uh, that um tax um from the ballot question to include forming partnerships with private, nonprofit and other public entities to develop workforce housing, including filling financing gaps and leveraging additional resources to create affordable workforce housing. Uh, and also to do buy downs and incentives, including using funds to defray the cost of existing housing stock for the purpose of affordable workforce housing. So in both of those um instances, um, those were not geographically limited, those partnerships again in the, in the ballot question and in the implementation either. So this is well within the, the parameters of what both the ballot question said, the plain language of the ballot question as well as the current code.
So just for clarification, it's clearly a partnership. It's uh creating workforce housing, there are permanent deed restrictions. Yeah. If, if hypothetically a future round of housing that we contributed to ended up with workforce housing, not in, none of, none of it was in Glenwood. Is that still consistent with these parameters?
Context of forming those partnerships, yeah, I think that's absolutely consistent um with the contributions that have made, been made um to Wha Fab uh or the recommendations made by Wha Fab. I think that's totally within the, the language.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Zelinski. Um, did this two C board weigh in on this?
Yeah, so the recommendation before you this evening is, is from the board.
It's from, okay, I thought it was from the Wha Fab board. That's why I was like. That is.
Uh, it's, it's a, it's confusing. So the
Oh, yeah.
Workforce Housing Fund Advisory Board is, they're the ones that um, you know, are in charge of the, the two C.
Got it. I think I was thinking of Western Regional. I think I got my.
Yeah.
So many acronyms. I get, I'm so sorry. Okay. That was my condition. They both start with W. It's really like the whole thing. It's so easy to confuse them. Yeah, no, I apologize for my ignorant question. Counsel, Counselor Dem.
Thanks. Um, the reason we did two hundred thousand last year is because it was a pilot program. We wanted to give a little more. Is that, is that, why did they only talk about a hundred thousand this year? What was their reasoning?
So a little bit of uh caveat, it's a good question. Last year, council decided to allocate two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. Uh, and this money is coming from the, the two C fund. So there's a little bit of a difference there. Um, I think West Mountain, or excuse me, mixing it, I didn't know. Uh, Wha Fab is uh, is open to a, a higher amount, but they wanted to uh be a little bit more on the conservative side with the ability to um uh, you know, review additional requests in the future. That's sort of the reason why they, I think they went with the hundred thousand. Uh, but again, th- this is coming down to sort of like a, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but this, you know, it's sort of a gut number of, you know, what, what feels right, I think is kind of where, where they were coming from.
And, and what is our current balance in that fund?
Our current balance right now is about two million dollars.
And that is uh, taken in account monies that we have allocated and promised to, to people?
That's correct.
Uh huh. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, any additional questions? We can ask April, anything we'd like. Please come up to the podium. Yes, please. Yeah.
Hey, hey, everybody. I'm April Long and the executive director of the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition. Shortened to the Housing Coalition. To get the W out of the way.
Okay. Counselor Wymer.
Hello, April. Glad you, I'm glad you showed up. Could, could you talk a little bit about your sort of longer term strategy for operational sustainability, financial sustainability? Kind of how, where your head's at right now and how you're thinking about the next year and, and next few years?
So for twenty twenty-five, our operate, we have our operational budget filled. Um, it is with twenty thousand dollars from each of our member organizations, which includes Glenwood Springs. So there's nine member organizations, so it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our operating funds. And I am a three-quarter time employee to the organization. And that's essentially almost all of the operating funds plus some accounting, legal assistance, things like that. Um, we intend to grow the operating dollars s- in a sustainable way, using, continuing to use our local government partners and increasing those partners potentially from other large employers from the region as we grow programs that are um, that, that are more supportable by our employers. So that's one leg of what we're trying to do. Um, our Good Deeds Program, the money that you're talking about tonight would go to the, which is the Good Deeds Program. So those are our, that's our one program that we've launched with. Our board has con, has um discussed in the fall other programs and kind of arms and legs and pieces of that program to grow it. And then we have another strategic planning session coming in March to discuss more targeted and focused approaches for exactly which programs if we, you know, for the next three to five years we intend to launch. So we hope that we can fund the programs that we intend to launch with large philanthropic dollars and we have a um a corporation that is considering contributions to our organization right now to the tune of possibly two million dollars a year for the next few years.
Wow.
Um, Picking County passed a tax this year and that tax allows them similarly to contribute into partnerships. They're contemplating a million dollars this year and growing that number. They're contemplating a million dollars this year and growing that number in years to come, possibly even in this first year. Um, and that would not be restricted to the good deeds program, but to any program that we may want to launch that Picking County wants to be invested in. And then we're continuing to pursue grants from the state and federal government, grants from foundations, the large state foundations. And then with that, we've talked about some different financing or funding options that include things like in lieu of fee programs that other, or that local governments have. You may have one. I know Aspen has one. So consolidating those in lieu of fees where they're not, um, they're not as efficient as you would like them to be on a jurisdiction by jurisdiction basis. But if we could pool this resources together, we might be able to do a little more with those in lieu of fees. And we've also discussed the idea of, um, you know, like a, a regional district. And so that's something that requires a lot more thought, but if we could grow a little more with a little more capacity to begin um, exploring those thoughts a little bit more. So, so kind of baby stepping into what we could become, but not getting out of our skis.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions for April? I'm going to bring it, bring it back to council for a motion. Councillor Shacter.
I'll comment after the motion. Um, I would move that we, um, support and approve the workforce housing financial advisory board recommendation to allocate from two C funds, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next three years with the option for them to consider as needed, coming back to us for other amounts as the program develops.
Okay, I have a motion. Um, do I have a second? Councillor Zelinski.
I have a second. Okay.
Um, any discussion?
Yes.
Councillor Shacter, your lights on.
Um, I'm been the liaison and very, very happy with the, in the amount of thought that goes into this. There was a lot of discussion about the amount. Because it's two C funds and not general funds, there were, there was discussion about more and less, and this seemed like a reasonable number, given that it's a three-year commitment and it's still unfolding and there is room to leverage more. No question that the pilot was successful. Um, and, and so I was very supportive of their decision. Um, and as you all know, I'm looking also at leveraging other money toward um, preservation of mobile home parks, which is much more complicated. I'll actually be talking to April about in the morning. This does not preclude any of the programs they're doing. It looks like there's a lot of money there, but remember we have a pilot for our rental. This is a pilot. We're looking at other things. So I think this is very suitable for the mission and for the amount of money. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, any additional comments? Okay. Well, with that, I will go ahead and call the question.
Yes, councillor Zelinski. Yes, Mayor Wusso. Yes, councillor Gottes. Yes, Mayor Protem Dame. Yes, or no councillor Wymer. Yes, councillor Shacter and that's where you talk Matt Sims.
Yes, I'm, I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you.
It passes six, one.
Um, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us. And I, you know, a big thanks to the residents of the community that approved two C so that we could allocate it to programs like this, which in this case turned short-term rentals into affordable housing for our community workers and essential, you know, um, workforce. So thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Excellent. You want me to say thank you to us? Is that what you think? Okay. Yeah. Okay, Jonathan. Okay, um, we have at the podium, our esteemed Public Works Director, Matt Langhorst, to discuss ordinance 2025-01 Pay As You Throw code updates.
Good evening, council. Um, Matt Langhorst, Public Works Director. I'd like to notice that this is the first ordinance of the year and we made it all the way into February. So that's pretty good.
I think we're killing it.
Um, this ordinance kind of covers some, uh, just housekeeping things that we have for pay-as-you-throws. We've made changes to it. Um, I'm just going to go through those really quick. There's about six of them. The sixth one is probably the one they're most interested in, I would guess. Um, one in the original ordinance, we had one, two, three pricing as we changed prices last year and kind of leaned towards the, um, wildlife containers a little bit less. That changes that, uh, language. So we just need to pull that out of there. One thing that's in our contract, we don't have in the ordinance is that if somebody orders a wildlife container, they must keep it for one year. Yes, if you move out, okay, you can return the container kind of thing. But if you order it, we don't want people ordering them, keeping it for six months while it's bear season, then getting the cheaper version of it for six months. That's a, a logistical nightmare, uh, for Mountain Waste Recycling and us. Um, so the intent was, and it's in the contract, that they would be for one year. And, uh, Carl can figure that out later when it becomes a problem. The yellow and green tags that are placed on the containers are in the contract, but it's not in the ordinance. We want to legitimize that because we are noticing somebody of something. Um, we would like to put in there that, uh, the contractor, because we may change contractors in the future, you don't know, has to label the containers. Uh, we have found a few that aren't. Um, and we're basically, the contractor is not disputing that, but I'd like to put it in language so that they have to do it. The wildlife containers, we are also putting there that they have to be certified. Now that's an interesting word because there's different ways to certify wildlife containers, but there's basically two or three companies that may do that. And it's kind of intended that where they would have to fall in one of those two or three conferences. Uh, also changing in here is four months holds. We have had requests from the public that we move that to five months. People could be gone. October, November, December, January, February, kind of go to Arizona, wherever they go. And that works for us actually quite well. So we don't have any problem with that. Number six is probably the one everybody's most interested in, is the longest in the staff report, if you notice it. Basically what we're saying in number six is that if you put your cart out on the curb or within the right-of-way during your day of service, you pick it up, you put it out six, seven o'clock in the morning, you have to bring it back in six, seven o'clock at night kind of thing. You have to actually bring it in. So the main intent of this conversation is to start getting people to remove them from our right-of-way, which are there permanently. There are other sections of code that we could utilize to ask this, but I thought it'd be a little bit more pointed and clear for code enforcement. If we said, hey, you are no longer allowed to keep your can onto this side of the alleyway fence. You have to keep it on that side of the alleyway fence. I was going to go out and take photos all day today of fun alleyway situations where the cans are all over and falling into the alleyways and it makes it hard to snow plow and maintain. Next it, you've all been there. You've all driven up down the alleyways. You've seen them. Um, we are not going to go after this heavily, but we would like to notice this when Bree gets back and start saying, hey, let's move our containers into at least our properties. And then there's other codes that say how they should be contained and stored and those kinds of fun things on the properties themselves. But I'm trying to clean up the alleyways a little bit so that we can actually maintain them. Cause we do get quite a few complaints over the winter time that they're not being plowed. And then we go out and meet with the residents. Well, how would you like us to plow this with all this stuff within the alleyways? So that's kind of the more robust portion of this, if you want to call it. Um, but it's just clarifying another section in code and moving it into here. So I am open for questions because that's basically everything that we have in there.
Okay. Any questions on this? No questions. Oh, we got councillor Gottes.
Uh, under section G, now G of the, uh, exhibit A, it says if animals or wildlife gain access to non-wildlife resistant containers two or more times in any 12-month period, the city may require wildlife resistant container for all subsequent collections. I like that, but talk to me about what may means. Why? That, that, that provides some gray area. If, if somebody's
Sure.
putting it out there and it'd get broken into repeatedly, why isn't it shall?
So that one's already, already in code. You probably realize that. It's not being added because there are situations where, you know, maybe we're trying to give a little bit of a gray area. So if somebody has a good excuse for why this has occurred, then maybe they get a third chance at it. But basically we do two times it out. You have to come up with a really good excuse at that moment of, I, I can't even think of one, but you have to come up with a good excuse because code enforcement is one that goes out and makes the decisions. And they're pretty by the book.
Yeah.
Um, and then they tell us, hey, this is their second notice. Luisa calls them up and basically says, you're moving to a wildlife can. We did this several times last year and they all got the two.
Okay.
But we're going to give a little gray area. So code enforcement has a little bit of give and take, uh, so it's not just so solid.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Um, any additional questions from? Okay. Um, um, Matt Sims, councillor Sim or?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay. Awesome. Great. Um, there is no one here, so I could open it up to public comment. However, I would just probably need to close it right away. How about online? Merrill, you're the only one online too. Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to council for a motion. Councillor.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Uh, item 11 ordinance 202501. I would move that we approve the pay as you throw code updates based on the staff report.
Right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Okay, um, moving on to item number 12. Resolution 2025-04 Micro Transit Downtowner. This is a fun one to talk about.
Yes. Good evening, council. Ryan Gordon, the city engineer, right? So the resolution in front of you is regarding the micro transit system that we are rolling out is asking that we establish a $1 per ride fee to, to start out with. A little bit, some of the other details too, on, on what going into, we, we had a work session, um, I think two weeks ago. Not much has changed, although the timing may change a little bit. Um, we are working with the vendor to secure the vehicles and whatnot. So real quick summary of what's going on, what we're planning. So we're planning a total of four vehicles, two ADA, um, capable vans. Those are eight-seaters, which include the, 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 the wheelchair accessible seat, um, one transit van that's 11-seater and one minivan that'd be six seats. So what's causing the delay is the larger vans and then plus outfitting them with the ADA ramps. So initially we were thinking probably April 1st. We're thinking maybe it's going to be April 15th or May 1st, when we finally get everything procured, all the, um, drivers hired. Um, and just to reiterate what the hours of service will be, hours of service be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00, or excuse me, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And this includes all of Glenwood Springs. Um, you know, it doesn't go up four mile, but it includes all of West Glenwood. Um, Oasis Creek, South Glenwood neighborhoods, um, everywhere, um, in, in the town. So that's what we're starting with. Um, we are going to do a, a trial period, um, you know, for, for a bunch of months and figure out what the different, um, nuances should be on, on pricing. So, um, we need a data collection period essentially, but again, we wanted to start with $1 per ride.
Excellent. Any questions? Councillor Wymer.
Ryan, can you say those hours and days and hours again?
Yep, a- a- absolutely. So it's going to be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00. Did it again. Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
That's great. Any other questions? Okay. Um, councillor Shacter.
Ryan, are you considering at this point any service distance parameters? For example, I'm in Glenwood Park. I want to go to Target. Can I engage a single ride that whole distance or is there an interim transfer to Ride Glenwood or to another, another one of the vans? How are we going to manage distance parameters, if at all?
Yep. No, uh, uh, to, to, to start with, um, it's going to be pick up where you are and drop off where you want to go. Um, and, and just so you know, it's a, it's a van share, right? So you may be picked up in Glenwood Park and it may stop two, three, five times to pick up people, um, and drop off before you get to Target. That's your destination.
And in terms of, um, monitoring its success, its ridership, where it goes, and perhaps even what kind of overlap with Ride Glenwood? Is it possible to do quarterly summaries back to us of how it's going?
Absolutely. We will be getting essentially whatever frequency we want to do quarterly seems, seems very appropriate. Um, we're collecting quite a bit of data. So it's going to be pickup, where you get picked up, where you get dropped off, uh, the frequency in day and quite a bit of other information. So I think absolutely we can see and, and do those heat maps, right? Where we're picking up, is it overlapping Glenwood, Ride Glenwood? Um, and same thing with the Ride Glenwood system. We're going to get data dumps from Rafta. So we can easily be able to look and overlap that data and see and, and judge. Again, is Ride Glenwood, we need to scale down Ride Glenwood and, and kind of this balancing act. But until we have some data, we don't have any of those answers, but absolutely, I think a quarterly report seems more than appropriate.
I think that'd be very helpful. Thank you very much.
Um, councillor Sims.
Um, we're going to operate four vehicles, uh, for 15 hours a day. Is that correct?
If I do the calculations, yes, sir. That is correct. Um, it may not be four. We have four vehicles available. Um, this is going to be very much data-driven. So if there's not much going on, we're not going to have four vehicles driving around.
Okay. And, uh, have we hired drivers?
Uh, my, my understanding is, is the drivers have not been hired yet, but that is in the works, um, along with developing the, the, the information to, to distribute to the public, but, um, we, we will be doing that effort relatively soon.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Wymer.
Ryan, if you could educate me, please, longer term, what would be the process for us to sort of edit the route for Ride Glenwood? How would that, how do you think that's going to work?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a really good question. I don't think I have a straightforward answer, but I, we've talked about it quite frequently. And so, um, you know, Ride Glenwood would possibly turn into more of a backbone system. Um, picking up some of the areas. So, so just an idea, um, Ride Glenwood, the buses are the only Rafta buses or the, or buses that go down highway 6 and 24 in West Glenwood. Right? So we could envision something that this bus goes from maybe West Glenwood through 6 and 24, somewhere down Grand Avenue up to the 27th Street, you know, BRG station.
Do we have a pretty clean say in where that bus goes?
We, we have all the say.
All the say.
We have all the say. We, we, you know, Rafta, Rafta does all of the driving. We pay Rafta to do it, but we work with Rafta to determine, determine the routes.
Okay.
So somewhat is, is dependent on where we have fixed bus stations, um, which makes it kind of challenging. Um, if we wanted to expand or move them, because we'd have to then relocate a bus shelter essentially or, or whatnot. But again, we have the opportunity in working with Rafta quite frequently on, on bus routes, service time, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. And then if that were to conflict or create opportunities or challenges for like the BRG, right? Do we then, what, what's our level of input into suggesting edits for the BRG?
Well, it's certainly less, less than Ride Glenwood, right? The BRT, the hogback, um, the Valley Hopper, those are specific Rafta routes.
Yep.
And they operate it independently of Glenwood. Um, we can certainly provide some input. Um, Rafta is, is a really good partner and will listen to us.
They are.
Um, they of course are the experts in that. So we would certainly defer to them, but if there are overlaps or other discussions on does the BRT or the Valley Hopper go a different route to, to kind of work with us?
Yep.
They're very, very, very interested in helping out and making the system successful. And I say system, that is transit, public transit, whether it's micro transit, Ride Glenwood, the BRT. So, you know, we, we fully anticipate working with them hand in hand.
Okay. That's kind of what I was looking for. Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Okay, um, I will open it up to comments. Do you have any comments from the community or questions from the community? Merrill, do you want to add anything?
He's just going to walk.
I know. Oh, great. Okay. Oh, we have two more. Council, I'm going to bring it back to council for, um, let's do a motion and discussion. You guys don't have questions, right? Okay. So councillor Gottes.
Do you have a question? But it's, it's, it's wrapped in a statement as well. So I will just make the motion and then I'll ask my question slash. Uh, I move, we approve resolution 202504 micro transit.
And a second?
That would be my second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second and I'll open Florida discussion and questions. We'll start with Jonathan.
So, um, I was just reading, uh, in the Silver Sun, they do a really good rundown of council meetings in Carbondale. And there is recently kind of a write-up on the conversation that their council had about their downtowner. And they do not charge. And I think this is a good um, start because it, it kind of puts a line in the sand of saying it's not just free, but it, it does allow us to at some point mitigate too free, which everybody loves, or raise it slightly if we need to in the future. So I, I love this idea. But I, I made the motion as is, but Ryan, would you, if you had your druthers, would you, uh, prefer that to be $1 or more to have staff available to make changes? Because what Carbondale is also dealing with is they're, they're talking already about congestion. Because what Carbondale is also dealing with is, they're, they're talking already about congestion pricing of, hey, at this specific time, maybe we need to make it a little more expensive, um, specifically areas around the high school. Um, things like that. Maybe we make it a little more expensive to de-incentivize it so that we can incentivize those high school kids. So, uh, maybe it's as simple as we just leave it be and then it comes back to us and you ask us when you have more data, but I guess I would say Carbondale is dealing with these things, we will certainly deal with it. And when that comes up, we probably need to be ready to move and say, yeah, maybe around like this geographic area this time, maybe it's a three dollar a ride. Because there's other options and it's not the right thing that we're going for.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I a hundred percent agree, that, you know, we obviously have no data, right? I keep going back to data, right? We have zero riders right now in micro transit. So as we get information back, I, 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 we want to be very dynamic in, in everything about micro transit, and that's really the beauty of it. And so whether that is congestion pricing or whether that is, um, if you take it to transit, maybe it's a free ride. If you are a senior, maybe you get a free pass or discounted. So there's permutations galore. And so I absolutely anticipate that once we learn more, we will be doing that. You could, for example, if you catch the ride at nine forty-five, perhaps that's a five dollar ride, perhaps, or, or, or something, right? But I do think we need to have that dynamicism built into this. And so, um, perhaps, well, we'll discuss with, with in internally what that means and if maybe we have to come back and redo that resolution or not.
Well, and, and so I guess that's maybe to, to my point is, if we wanna be dynamic and we wanna make those changes, this is an ordinance, so it would need to come back for another ordinance review and a second reading. Does that give you enough dyna- dynamic?
Flexibility?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I wanna give you enough flexibility to be able to address those kind of things without having come back for a first and second reading before us.
Well, this is a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
We have a little bit more flexibility with regards to that.
Okay, so you don't need that then? You don't think you need that additional freedom to be able to do that, those changes?
Uh, I would defer to either Steve or Carl to field exactly that.
No, I mean, I think we see you guys often enough that, you know, we'd like to keep you involved in that and correct me if I'm wrong, please, but my understanding is that, you know, nobody else is charging for this in the beginning because they didn't have the cuts, right? Rafta really is, is asking us to do this sort of. I mean, they're very supportive of us trying to, you know, start with a dollar, uh, and see how it goes. So you guys are gonna hear more about this from us.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And, 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 and the true reality is these systems, whether it's Ride Glenwood or the micro transit system, cost money and it's not an insignificant amount of money. And so there is a reason to do this to raise some amount of revenue in order to, to, to pay for it. So that's just the fact. And this is, to be quite frank, quite a premium service as well. And if you get picked up almost at your house or at your house and dropped off virtually at your destination, it's basically a taxi. And so for a buck a ride or a couple bucks, pretty good deal overall.
Thanks.
Um, Counselor Zalinski.
So first of all, I'm just absolutely so tickled to see this coming online. I'm pleased as all get out. And I will also say that we have had, we have the benefit of learning from Basalt, Aspen, Carbondale. Like, you know, you hate to be the last to pick up on something, but also there's some benefits to that. And so I think our learning curve is gonna be higher. I think starting out by, uh, charging initially, I've heard a lot of the problems that they're having, um, and it really is, how do they make it their own? Because right now they're beholden to that great money, otherwise they can't sustain their service. And so I think, you know, really looking forward, I think the more frequent check-ins that we can have, um, I don't even know if quarterly is gonna be often enough. Um, I think that, you know, we're gonna probably need to see this, it's almost like a Southbridge update. We're gonna need a pretty regular update on it so that we can kind of take that information, evaluate it, and, um, you know, really explore what the options are to use our resources.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with you. Again, we're gonna have data, you know, we've talked into the, to the vendor almost the next day. And so it's a matter of how fast we can turn the reports out. And we're as excited as you are, and this could be something really fun to, to really celebrate on, on a monthly basis or whatever frequency. So, um, I, I don't disagree with that sentiment.
I, I just wanna add that South Glenwood has been, um, kind of unfortunately not covered in a lot of our, our transit opportunities. And so I'm excited for them to have this as an option, but I also look forward to, and granted, I won't be on council probably when the data comes back out. However, I, I'm, I look forward to seeing the numbers, the, the demand, and maybe it will be, it'll prompt saying that there needs to be better transit coverage in that, in that region. Um, but in the meantime, having this as a segue and just to see what kind of activity we get, I really look forward to seeing the data. So.
Absolutely agree with you.
Thank you. Um, with that, we, I'll look from, do we already do a motion? So we have a motion on the table. We'll go ahead and vote on it.
It's unanimous, it passes.
We're excited. Thank you. Thanks for, please extend our gratitude to your whole department that really dug into the details and came up with this whole plan. Thank you. We appreciate it. Um, okay, moving on to ordinance number thirteen. Oh, wait, no, item number thirteen, ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six municipal code penalty provisions.
This one is really exciting. We're gonna spend a couple hours on it. This really comes up because we, uh, have seen some recent case law in Colorado. That calls into question whether or not municipal courts can impose fines that exceed similar offenses and fines, uh, as they're laid out in state statute. Um, our new municipal judge and, um, had the unfortunate circumstances of being involved in one of those cases that got litigated, coming out of rifle. Uh, at his recommendation and the prosecutor's recommendation, we're making some changes to the code to just acknowledge that we won't exceed whatever the corollary state, uh, penalty would be. Um, there again, the reason why you see him in both the state statutes and in the municipal court is that if we cite to the state statute, we'd have to go over to county court versus being able to use a municipal court, they have to be adopted in here at, at Muni Court. So happy, happy to answer any questions. But these really just kind of lay out and just acknowledge that we're not going to exceed, uh, corollary, corollary state, uh, penalties for similar charges.
Um, questions, Counselor Wymer?
Carl, what's the basis for the challenge there?
Um, it's kind of a base, it, it's sort of based around the idea that, um, uh, kind of on an equal protection basis, you shouldn't be, and a fifth amendment basis, you shouldn't be, um, be able to be foreign shopped where some of the municipal penalties were like jail time for an offense that at the state level has been determined to be a penalty assessment. And so just trying to bring those in line, uh, together.
So as an example, if the state were to say littering is twenty-five bucks. And, and we, we love Glenwood so much, we're gonna say littering is fifty bucks.
We would have to.
We can't do that.
We can't do that. I, there's a case up on appeal right now. Um, CML has filed an amicus brief related to this. I really don't know where that's gonna land, um, honestly. And from our standpoint, this is really not something that comes up in very many instances. Um, it's really going to be maybe a disorderly conduct, something like that, that is a higher level municipal offense and a lower level state offense, um, because you're not gonna see a state offense on, on littering, um, necessarily, you know what I mean? That those ones that are kind of bread and butter for what we do at the Muni Court, we're just not going to see an overlap too much with state state charges.
Okay, excellent. Um, any additional questions? Okay, we'll open it to public comment as it is in ordinance, and we take public comment on everything. So here we are. There are no public comments. Um, Merrill, you're still the only member of the public online. Would you like to discuss this? Any questions? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you for playing along with us, Merrill. We appreciate it. Um, bringing it back to council for a motion. Counselor Deb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And item thirteen ordinance twenty twenty five oh six, I move that we approve the municipal code penalty provisions as outlined in the staff report.
My second. Great, we have a, a motion, we have a second. We'll go ahead and call the question. Thank you.
Aye.
It passes seven zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Um, we are trucking through this evening's agenda. Thank you all. Um, I'm gonna start up with council comments. Counselor Zalinski? Counselor Wymer, or I'm sorry, Counselor Schachter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one comment is kudos, um, to our Parks and Rec. I don't think a lot of people know that we have a group of volunteers numbering about two that roll our bike trails behind Wolfson in the winter, when, when there's adequate snow, there was last week, and they make for fantastic cross-country skiing right here in town. And they're doing it, um, with waivers, but basically on their own goodwill, and it is a fantastic opportunity. And I just wanted to thank them because we took advantage of it. It is awesome. Um, secondly, um, uh, comment, um, in the consent agenda, we were very happy to approve our first student member of the work of the FAB, Noah Smith, a high school student who is interested in finance, investing and civil civic service, and we've got a member from Glenwood High School.
Um, that's awesome. That's a one-year term?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, the second thing, I brought this up at our last meeting, and I would, um, I'm gonna, um, ask to make, I would like to make a motion that we authorize our city manager to draft and send a letter to the Joint Budget Committee, um, in support of retaining the rifle correctional center. Um, I don't know if any of you did homework. I know there were questions. I wasn't gonna do it for you, but I think this is a goodwill gesture for one of our neighbors and, and multiple communities saying, hey, we're willing to lend our support for you, um, just like we would ask somebody to lend support for RMI or other things. So, um, I would, um, make a motion to authorize our manager to draft and send a letter without our review to the Joint Budget Committee. I think their deadline is March fifth this time.
Okay, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can I, Madam Mayor, add something real quick? I didn't do my homework on this, so I don't really know. But what I will say is that I had lunch with all of the city managers from Carbondale Down Valley. It came up during lunch and all of them were, uh, unanimous, yes, we absolutely are, so for what that's worth.
I appreciate, thank you for giving, and thank you for going to lunch with them. That's awesome. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions before I call the question to support a letter of support um, from our council for the support of the rifle correctional facility?
Retaining it.
Okay, um, all, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. We appreciate it. Okay, um, continue with council comments. Counselor Wymer.
One thing I've been thinking about in our last, in our last council, they had a really good update about youth tobacco use, if you guys remember. And, and there was a statistic in there, seventy-eight percent of minors that were polled as part of that say that they are not refused sales at retail. That's insane and, and, and and outrageous to me, right? That, that we, I feel like we probably do such a good job of alcohol that it's not even, it's not even a conversation anymore. Um, but almost, almost four in five minors are allowed to buy uh, tobacco products, um, without any challenge. And, and I wonder, I just wonder, you know, Carl or, or, you know, smarter council people than I, is there anything we can do about that?
I'll have to fact check myself with the police department, but my understanding is that this is happening in, in lots of places. There is a state agency that we can contact that will come in and help us and kind of do that, I don't wanna say sting, but sting.
Yeah.
I think they're busy, right? But we could reach back out to them again and see if they can come in and throw us an assist. So that's one thing we could do.
Is there general consensus and support for that on council? If you guys wanna just nod your heads, I, I think you've got the support. So if you would reach out to them, we would love it.
It just infuriates me that there's people there sell, you know, running these shops selling cigarettes to these kids.
All right.
So, yeah, the Liquor Enforcement and Tobacco Agency out of Junction, they come in and they run sting operations. Uh, tobacco gets caught once in a while, liquor gets caught once in a while. I can reach out to them and have them come and do a sting of certain, a minor check of certain places if you want. Um, they do them occasionally and they're happy to do them if we reach out to them. So.
Carl, Carl, sorry, Madam, tying back to our last sort of topic here. Are we allowed to impose harsher penalties than what the state would allow?
Probably not harsher than the state allows, um, but we also can conduct some operations of our own. Um, and I'll, I'll talk to the chief about that, about what we might wanna do and, and how we might wanna do that on a more regular basis. Um, I, I think one of the struggles is because it is enforcement, those types of operations are so infrequent. Um, you have a lot of staff turnover in between, and so they don't, nobody remembers that it ever occurred, right? Um, so I think that is one area that we can definitely work on.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any additional comments?
May I follow the question off?
Sure.
It seemed, I don't know, how much latitude do we have? Or is it all state and federal, um, governed as far as procedures? Cause the marijuana procedures are pretty rigid, tight in training. Are the tobacco ones controlled elsewhere?
Um, it's a little bit of both. I mean, primarily, you know, alcohol, tobacco, firearms, those things are, are all, you know, kind of federally controlled. Uh, and so we're at the lowest rung. Um, we do have, from our standpoint, what we do have is some licensing provisions uh, underneath the business licensing that we could, we can take a look at. Um, that would be, that would be one area that we have leverage along with just simply, um, it's a code violation, promote code violation to, to serve um, to underage. So we can look at both of those.
Yeah, I hope all the convenience stores are put on notice that we, we take it seriously, that our kids are exposed to that. And we don't, we don't want that to happen in Glenwood. Counselor Zalinski.
Um, okay, so first of all, uh, this evening on the consent agenda, we appointed new members to three of our boards and commissions. And so I just wanted to welcome them and, um, also, you know, just encourage any interested parties to continue to pay attention to what's happening on those and look for open seats or alternate seats and get involved. Um, I also, also am thrilled, every time I get a presentation on our inter-active economic profile, I'm stunned at the volume of information that's there. I think anybody that runs a business in town could benefit from checking it regularly. Um, anybody who has an attraction or it's just, it's gonna be such an incredibly valuable resource. So I just really wanna say thanks to our staff and, um, you know, just how excited I am to have that available. And, uh, just for all you out there, um, the Rocky Mountain year is launching a Glenwood Springs destination um, based package, which is the first time they've done that this summer. Um, because they had so much, people just felt they didn't get enough time in Glenwood. So, yay us. Um, and that'll be a great, you know, those are visitors that come in on foot. They'll be able to take advantage of our downtowner. They'll be able to stay close to our, you know, downtown attractions and amenities. And so I think it's a big win.
That's awesome. Um, Counselor Gottes.
So several meetings ago, we, in a work session directed staff to bring back, uh, a pilot program on, uh, some housing affordability, uh, issues. And, um, just because of noticing requirements and the like, um, if we want those to come back before us in a timely manner, we would need to, I guess, not authorize, but give, uh, Hannah and Steve the kind of head nod that um, we would be okay with a special session. So, um, and is that okay if we call, not us, special session, excuse me. P and Z, play, painting and zoning, special session on, I believe, March tenth or eleventh-ish so that it would come back before us on the March twentieth meeting.
Um, yes, we do hold special meetings from time to time, and this is one of those cases where we were just a little too busy to get that notice out in time for this particular item. And we, I'm polling currently on availability. So if I have got a quorum to show up on the tenth or the eleventh, we can certainly pull that off.
Excellent.
Cool.
Thank you.
You don't need a motion or anything, you just need a head nod or like generally folks.
Got it. Give a, a nod. So, thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. And thanks, and please pass our thank you on to P and Z for that extra meeting.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Deb.
Thank you. Uh, just piggybacking on Counselor Zalinski's comment on the interactive, I forget what she said. I forget what she said, but the the data, the data thing you can look. Yeah, in- interactive economic profile. I was at the D D A meeting on Tuesday, the Downtown Development Authority. And had a wonderful presentation of our economic specialist. About the D D A boundary, interactive economic data collection. It was unbelievable. There's a link on our website, I think it's pretty much right in the beginning. That says D D A, economic data, whatever it says, Hannah, help me if I got the name wrong. But it it tells us year by year what's going on. In in downtown, how many, how many visitors, how many locals, how many regional people visit downtown, and the numbers are staggering. It is unbelievable how busy our downtown is, how well our downtown is doing. And I encourage everybody to go click on that link and check it out. You can change your parameters in there and and look at different data sets. And it is unbelievable. I think the the program we're using is is very well used. So. I just wanted to add that on, that it's available on the on the internet.
Why don't we do a little shout out? So if you will go to C O G S dot U S. And then you go to departments and then over to Economic Development under the Community Development tab. Right at the top, you see kind of what looks like a pulse, like if you were looking at somebody's heart rate. And it's view the interactive economic profile dashboard. And it is, you know, click on that and and then have fun navigate. You know, for small businesses in Glenwood, it is an invaluable tool. It'll tell you what days more people come to Glenwood. What days, how far away they're coming from, just. Yeah. Get you talking, no.
I am, but this is just, this is overall city. There was one for the D D A specifically. I encouraged the D D A one because it was to me very, very sad. That's it, Downtown Development, right there. It was amazing. I was, I was like, counselor should see this. And Hannah's like, council saw that, but you were on vacation. So I'm like, okay, I got it.
Anybody else for council comments?
I have one.
Hey, go ahead.
I just wanna say I'm really excited about the Good Deeds Program. I've talked about it to several friends. And I think I know a couple of people who are good people that we wanna have in this community are gonna take advantage of it. So thank you all for supporting it as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Sam. Thanks so much for joining us this evening remotely, even though you feel crummy.
It happens, but you know, it's payoff, as you said, no good deed type thing.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, I have a few this evening, so bear with me. I just wanted to do a little shout out to Steve Boyd, who presented at the Chambers Economic Symposium. Also, a shout out to the Chamber, but Steve did a great update on where we are as a community. Economically, you know, highlighted some of the really cool things we have going on, which is an easy segue to just. Express some gratitude to staff because all the things, you know, it's it's easy enough for us to spend an evening twice a month. Digging into the details and making decisions, but our staff is working on this. You know, all day, every day to come up with these great opportunities to strengthen Glenwood, to keep us economically strong. And to keep us, you know, just a great community and a fun community to live in. And I'm I'm very happy with the outcome. And the exciting opportunities and, you know, it's things like the microtransit. It's, you know, it's these cool programs like the Good Deeds. This is, this is fun stuff and it's, it's when we put our energy towards positive things rather than always combating more challenging things. It's the fun stuff. And we've, just in the last couple of months, I feel like we've been able to really focus on the fun. I don't know what the miss, the variable of negativity is missing right now, but this has been fun. I really appreciate it. In addition to that, I had an opportunity to do the Colorado Municipal League Mayor's Summit in Denver. So I went over and hung out with all the other mayors from Glenwood, which are a color. Funny, because when somebody goes, hey, mayor, a lot of people turn when you're in a room with them. There was a lot of mayors in the room. But you know, the enthusiasm. Everyone, people, people will come up and say, where are you from? And when I would say Glenwood Springs, they would all say, oh, I love Glenwood. Glenwood is where we vacation. Glenwood is one of those places that when we're traveling, we always stop. It is a place that it's a destination. And it's, it's got, people have great memories from our town. So to be able to live here, we are fortunate. We, you know, we, I feel fortunate to be a steward of this community and making decisions. So really fun opportunity. C M L is a great organization. We're, we're fortunate to be involved in it. They do so many things that benefit communities across Colorado. You know, it's the, the United We're Stronger concept, and I really, I cannot commend them enough for what they do. So I wanted to mention that. And then also I did a Katie and Kay interview earlier this week, just. It's a great opportunity to highlight some of the things we do, and I did do a shout out to Jacob Zook with our Economic Development. For that, for that interactive. Yeah, whatever it's called, Interactive Economic Profile, yeah. Because he knows his stuff. He too presented at the Chamber Economic Symposium. And that was the one thing people were coming up in the hallway to talk to me about. That thing's so cool. That's awesome. I look forward to checking it out. So. Super fun. Last but not least, and now since I've been talking quite some time, when I tell you I'll be gone, you can be like, phew, take a little break. She's taken up all of her airtime right now to say I will be gone on the March twentieth meeting. Because we're going early for our spring break. So, thank you. Will you do a reminder when you get to your comments on? What, what the layout for the municipal elections is? So April municipal election, will we put new people in for the first meeting or the second meeting? Second meeting? Okay, I wasn't sure. I was counting down. Awesome, thank you. Steve Boyd.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, a couple of things. One bad, the rest good. There's gonna be a press release that comes out on Monday from Mind Springs. And what it's gonna say is that they are putting together a plan to shut the facility. We had another call with the Governance Committee today that went about the way that I thought it would, but there was basically a vote of no confidence in. You know, the leadership there to get this done, not necessarily their fault, little bit of a perfect storm. They've got a crisis in credibility. They've got a crisis in. They got a financial crisis on their hands. I mean, they've just, it's just too much. So. Be aware of that. It's not ideal, but you know, we'll regroup and see where to go from there. Second thing is, we were told that Jeff Heard was gonna be in town at the county. And we sort of intercepted that a little bit. They asked us to keep a low profile so nobody's feelings can get hurt here. They did invite the mayor. Who did actually a fantastic job of just kind of moderating the room. And by the time we were done, Jeff was literally like, I'm all in, hundred percent. I'm with you guys. I can see how important this is. I'm there. What do you need me to do? So. On the mind, yes. Yes, thank you. It's the only thing that we talked about. Yeah, it was, it's awesome. That was terrific. I'm gonna be gone Wednesday and Thursday and Friday next week at I C M A in Denver. Getting my network on. If we've got a minute here, I'm gonna just share my screen really fast. If this will come up. You guys asked us a little while ago to do an employee satisfaction survey. And we did that, and I just wanna really quickly, I won't take long on this, but I I wanna just kind of tell you guys how it turned out. So we have two hundred full-time employees and that's who we asked. We had a hundred and twenty participate. So sixty percent is really a pretty good participation rate. We would expect about forty. So, and we just threw it up for a week, right? Either take it or don't. We had six questions about the city as a whole, and then we had seven questions about what can we get better at. So this first one was, do you feel the city of Glenwood Springs culture is consistent with your personal values? So these red, there were actually two categories, strongly disagree and disagree. This is neutral, and then, you know, green is agree or strongly agree. So that turned out pretty good. Most people are feeling okay about, you know, the values. How much does management team value feedback? This also came back pretty good, you know, eighty-seven, which is what, about seventy-two percent? Said that they thought that we valued their feedback, so that was good. This one surprised me a little bit. Does your role offer opportunities to achieve your professional goals? Most people did, you know. We only had eleven people that said that they didn't. And the reason that surprises me is that we've got a lot of places in the organization. They just don't really have a lot of headroom, right? If you want to go somewhere else. You know, if you've got Dan Roper's job or something, you're, you're leaving town, right? But people felt a little bit better about that than I guess I had expected. There were three questions that I really cared about. And it was about, you know, how do you feel about your team? And would you recruit somebody to come here because this is a good place to be? And then just overall work experience. So in terms of would you recommend the city for somebody, and this is. Right, wow. I mean, it's pretty good. There's only five percent or six people that wouldn't do that. I don't know who those six people are. But right, right, I'll find. I said it was anonymous. It wasn't. No, but that, that is really good. I think most people are, you know, willing to bring friends and family in here if possible. So collaboration within your department also came back really strong. I mean, five percent of people are are unhappy. And you can expect ten to fifteen percent, you know, in a healthy organization. So we were. And then the one that I cared about the most is how do you rate your overall work experience? Only two people said they don't like it here, and eighty percent said that that they do. So. It was a little bit surprising how positive the results were. I I think there are a number of things that go into that. One of those things, obviously, the senior team is good, right? I mean, they do a great job and people like working for them and stuff. But one of the things that they've done, and Hannah's department is a perfect example of this. You know, she was understaffed and we've added, what, three people to your staff recently here? And I think in all three cases, we didn't find what we wanted. And it was like, but that guy's good, he's fits well enough. We really need the help right now, but we held our ground and we said it's not right. And if it's not right, we're not gonna do it. We got over the goal line, I think, on all three of those. And I feel absolutely fantastic about the last couple dozen hires that we've had. I mean, it's just, it's phenomenal. I think you guys should know that this starts with you guys approving the resources that we need. And it's the way that you treat our staff. I mean, our, our bigger overall staff pays attention to this kind of stuff. This wouldn't happen. If, you know, you've got a job where you don't, you can't have five thousand dollars to make a problem go away, and you have to go back to council every time you turn around. That's not insignificant in this, and I think you guys should feel good about that. At the end of the day, you know. What is working here is that we have two hundred people that come to work every day and choose to make this a great place to be. So I think you guys should feel really good about that. I think the the state of our staff is fantastic right now. In terms of where we could get better, there was one that came up and that was pay, right? People are. And I mean, keep in mind, we did a salary survey five years ago, and we implemented the whole thing, and it hurt, but we did it. So I felt good about where we were then. Every year since then, we've given five percent, right? So we should be pretty caught up. I was a little surprised that the dissatisfaction was as high as it was. A lot of people have reminded me it's always gonna be that way. It is what it is. We'll do another salary survey coming up. It's been five years. We owe it to people. Kind of temper expectations a little bit because I think most people are fairly well-paid, whatever. The other two places to improve, one of them was I T, and I expected that was coming because we've had turnover in I T. And I asked Nick fix our cybersecurity, right? And then I asked him fix our networks, and they, that's what they were focusing on. So customer service, you know, a little bit, but we're fully staffed in I T now. And we've got that stuff behind us, so I think that we'll get better at that. The other one was internal communication, also a very fair criticism. We don't get people together quite enough, so we're gonna start doing some things like a quarterly teams to just kind of, how's it going? And recognize some people for doing great things and what questions do you have and and that kind of stuff. That's it.
Slide, some negative slides about us.
This, this one's council right here, this red one on the line. Now, this one is, do you like employee-wide events? And I don't really care. This was a little bit of a test of are you guys paying attention? But just to go through training and development, you know, can we make improvements? You know, there's some room to improve here. Work-life balance here, career advancement here, there's pay, compensation.
Yeah, for sure.
So fifty-six people, you know, which is forty-seven percent, feel like there are compensation and benefits. And there's compensation and benefits compared to what can I make somewhere else in a competitive environment? And then there's compensation and benefits for how can I live in this valley? And those are two different things. There's only so much we can do about that. But thank you guys for all of your help and support, and I really mean that it wouldn't happen. We couldn't do this if it wasn't for you guys being willing to trust us and give us the resources. So.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Very good. Do you have a question? Okay. Counselor goes.
That doesn't surprise me. None of this surprises me at all. And I think that. This council has been incredibly supportive of staff. I I would say every council I've been on has been by and large very supportive of staff. And so thank you. I think we should give ourselves a pat on the back, but really, really, it is you, Steve. It is Hannah. Is, it is Chief Harris, Yvette. It is Ryan. It's everybody. It starts with our leadership. And absolutely the basis of our organization is the boots-on-the-ground frontline people that make you all look so good. I I think that. The pay, you're always gonna have that a little bit, especially in this valley, because everybody talks to their friends in Snowmass and Picken County. Who are making twenty-five percent more, but commuting, and that's always gonna be an issue. So I I think that's something we can work on. We need to be aware of it, but. I'm really glad we did it. Steve, is there any way? Maybe I'll throw this out as a suggestion is now that we've done this, we have a benchmark on it. Might be good to do it every year, but additionally, maybe a community survey that would kind of survey similar things about. How do people feel about kind of the state of the city? Aspen has a program.
It's already in the works. Yeah. It's already in the works. Okay.
Well, you're right. We designed these questions on this because at least a couple of these we will ask every year, and I think that's right. You're right, it's already in the works. In March, we'll launch that. I've worked, I've looked into a couple of different ideas and stuff. And the idea there would be to do it again annually. And so I I guess I should probably give some credit. Deborah Figueroa was the one who really made this. An employee-centric place, right? I mean, she kind of turned that culture, and that's where this started. It's taken a long time to get here, but. She deserves some of the credit, too.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for those comments. Carl Hyland.
I don't have much that can follow that. What I will say is that in the follow-up to the Jeff Heard meeting. We are developing the staff contacts. We've been, both Richard and I, on email and phones and Zooms all day today. On various issues related to that and trying to deepen that relationship with his office. We view that as, you know, having a, an active, engaged representative in the third C D again as a huge positive. And I think some opportunities there for Glenwood to take a leadership role, much as we have done on some statewide issues. For the third C D, and so I think that's a great thing. And it was kind of the kickoff meeting that got put together yesterday that got that going. So thank you.
Okay, excellent. Well, with that in mind, we'll go ahead and look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, social events, sorry, social events.